Good morning everyone. At this time I would like to call the Board of Education meeting to order and I would like to ask our board members to identify themselves to the record as I call your name. Todd Ferrante is present, William Buchanan.
Here.
Katie Addis.
Present.
John Andes.
Present.
William Gordy.
Present.
Elena McComas.
Present.
And Donald Smack is absent today. We do have a quorum. Now can I have a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda and a second?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. McComas?
Second.
A second by Mr. Buchanan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now I need a motion to enter into closed session under general provisions of Article 3-305b of the annotated Code of Maryland for the following reasons: To approve closed session minutes from the previous month. And Section 3-305b 1: To discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. Or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 3-305b 7: To consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. And Section 3-305b 9: To discuss matters relative to negotiations. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.
Guys, we're gonna go.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we reconvene this Board of Education session meeting, I want to remind everyone that we still have a quorum. Today, a closed session meeting was held pursuant to general provisions of Article three dash three oh five B of the Annotated Code of Maryland to approve closed session minutes, to discuss personnel matters, to consult with legal counsel, and discuss matters relative to negotiations. Pastor Woody Wilson is here from United, Stephen United Methodist Church to lead us in the invocation today. We welcome you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Wilson.
First, let me thank you for inviting me here to give the occasion. Would you pray with me, please? Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. We thank you today for all your blessings. We thank you for the successful outcomes of our schools and our events. We thank you for the board, all of our staff, both those teaching and those supporting members. We ask that you continue to bless them abundantly. We continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our duties and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say, and glory be to you, loving God, now and always, through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure.
My goodness.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Wilson, thank you for that beautiful blessing. We appreciate you being here with us today. Thank you. Now, I'd ask my board, can I have a motion to approve the open session board meeting from September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four? Need a motion in a second.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gordy, and a second by Mr. Buchanan. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Taylor for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I'm excited to say that we are officially halfway through the first marking period of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Students' first midterms went home earlier this month, which is giving them the opportunity to reflect on their work so far, plan improvements, and certainly celebrate the many achievements that they accomplish. I thought I'd channel that spirit of reflection with my report today. Now, in mid-October, I am proud to say that I believe our school year has gotten off to good, let me change that, to a great start. I have been fortunate to work several school visits into my calendar this year, so I've heard firsthand from both our students, our staff, and our leadership this year that we're on the right track to having maybe one of our best years yet. Since my report last month, our own media expo has received a national commendation from the American Association of School Librarians. Two heroic students from Pokemoke Middle School were honored for saving a fellow classmate who was choking. And I'm gonna stop there for just a minute, because I got to experience rewarding those with a superintendent's challenge coin. And in my forty-one years of being in this, this school system, and thirty-six of them in leadership, I was never more impressed with two young kids who saved a young girl's life in the cafeteria one day when she was choking. I will remember that forever. It was something really to hear about it and then to talk to those two boys that did that. And then the young girl was there that day, and I got to honor them along with our sheriff here in Worcester County. And we also had a national nonprofit called Hungry for Music donate musical instruments to support students' exploration of music at two of our elementary schools. This fall is also a great opportunity for us to start identifying educational needs and beginning to personalize, as we do here in Worcester County, learning for every student. Diagnostics like iReady, Dibbles, and last year's MCAP data are giving our educators a clearer picture of how to support each of their students to help them grow and achieve from where they are right now, and certainly moving them forward. All in all, I'd say our own midterm indicates a great outlook for the rest of the school year. And for those in attendance today, I am happy to tell you we are on track with Buckingham Elementary School. So we're excited from our commissioners to get that funded. And with that great news, I will turn it over to our president, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And now I'd like to welcome our student representatives, our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student representatives who are joining us today to give us the reports of their high schools. And I think today we're starting with Teresa. So Teresa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Good afternoon, Board of Education members and executive team. We have had an exciting start to the fall season with positive results from first progress reports of the school year. Students have been working diligently in class and taking advantage of tutoring during your sixty and in before and after-school academy as needed. Celebrations this past month include our blood drive on September twenty-fourth, which raised almost thirty units of blood. Our JROTC program was named a Navy Honor School for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. Homecoming activities that included Spirit Week, the pep rally, games, and dance were a great success. After-school academy continues to grow with over eighty students attending regularly. We anticipate another full class in driver's ed. Recent activities in UMES four H club included fish dissection, plantable paper, and edible applications of growing microgreens. Upcoming sessions will cover rocketry, making compound butter, wreath making, and an engineering challenge. The fall athletic season is in full swing, showcasing great performance from our soccer, field hockey, volleyball, cross-country, and golf teams. From October seventh to twelfth, we celebrated official appreciation week, honoring the significant contributions of our officials to our high school athletic program. The regular season will wrap up in the coming weeks as we prepare for postseason contests at the end of October and beginning of November. Upcoming events include our FaceTime event tonight at Cypress Park. Families, community partners, and staff from all three Pokemoke schools will come together to celebrate community and education. Our students against destructive decisions have planned an engaging and informational red ribbon week from October twenty-third to thirty-first. Our counselor's office continues to be buzzing with post-secondary events. Several college visits, several colleges visited our campus during your sixty, and college tours are, have already begun, adding to our summer tours with a total of twelve college visits and tours so far this year. Finally, our M C J R O T C Marine Corps birthday celebration is scheduled for November seventh. Pokemoke Community Schools students and staff are grateful for the continued support of our Board of Education and executive team. For our Worcester Technical High School's biomedical science program recently secured an Anna Tomage table. Anna Tomage table is the most advanced real human-based medical education system. This state-of-the-art platform offers digitized human cadavers and superior medical learning tools, transforming medical education and training. By incorporating the Anna Tomage table, our biomed students can enhance learning outcomes, lower laboratory costs, and establish technological leadership. Earlier this month, all Worcester Technical High School students participated in a Skills USA assembly. Students learned about the purpose of this student work organization, the benefits of joining, and the numerous opportunities to participate in whole leadership offices. Over the last two weeks, students interested in running for leadership offices ran individual campaigns and drafted speeches. Last week, all candidates gave their speeches in front of the entire student body. After assemblies, students participated in voting and officers were announced. Worcester Technical High School just named their Staff of the Month and two Students of the Month. Ms. Ginger Warren was announced Worcester Technical High School Staff of the Month. Ms. Warren is the school secretary and is fondly referred to as Mr. Bivalacqua's deputy grandma and the school's pilot. Congratulations to our two Students of the Month. Eric Mitchell is a tenth grader at Stephen Decatur High School. He is enrolled in the H V A C program. Jordan Pace is a senior and from Stephen Decatur High School. She is enrolled in the cosmetology program. Both students were selected from a list of students consistently receiving positive behavior referral from teacher and staff. Worcester Technical High School and chef Phil Cropper are currently hosting four students and two staff from Lille, France. The four students are French culinary arts students in their home country. The students and staff are visiting for two weeks as a foreign exchange partnership. Our guests have enjoyed a variety of activities, including attending classes at Worcester Tech and Stephen Decatur, attending a homecoming pep rally and football game, enjoying a bonfire on Assateague Beach, and touring Philadelphia. This week, our French guests will be preparing an authentic French lunch for the staff at Worcester Technical High School. They depart Thursday and to return to their school in Lille, France. This week, MSDE's expert review team will be visiting Worcester Tech. The expert review team will be visiting classrooms and speaking with students, teachers, and staff to gain insight into the programs of study, including both the successes and challenges that CTE education presents. We are excited to host a group and show them what makes Worcester Tech the flagship of CTE School here on the eastern shore. And now on to Ryan Portell from Snow Hill High School.
Thank you. October has been bustling with activity. Last week, we kicked off our homecoming festivities with Spirit Week. Monday was pajama pants day, and on Tuesday, we embraced Tropical Day with students dressed in lays and Hawaiian shirts. Wednesday brought White Lie Day, where students wore shirts featuring playful lies about themselves. Thursday was USA Day, celebrating American, American spirit with red, white, and blue attire. We wrapped up the week on Friday with Neon Day, as everyone geared up for the big game in vibrant neon colors. On Friday night, we crowned our homecoming On Friday night, we crowned our homecoming queen and, king and queen. Congratulations Dominic Kipers and Summer Young. The football game drew a great crowd of alumni, but despite a valiant effort from our team, Colonel Richardson came out victorious. Saturday night's dance was a hit, thanks to our Student Government Association, who transformed the cafeteria beautifully. A special thanks, also goes out to our Snow Hill staff volunteers and the Worcester County Sheriff's Department for ensuring a safe event. Looking ahead, all freshmen will be taking the PSAT tomorrow, followed by sophomores next Wednesday. Next Thursday is our annual Senior Application Day, where seniors can meet with onsite admissions representatives from Salisbury University and UMES. In addition to receiving immediate feedback on their applications, students will also have access to one-on-one assistance in completing their college applications. This is a fantastic opportunity, especially to those considering out-of-state colleges, technical schools, or trade programs. We're also excited to announce that we held a dual enrollment session today for students interested in taking dual enrollment classes. Representatives from Salisbury University and Warwick Community, Community College were on hand to provide firsthand insights. Last week, students attended the UMES College Fair, which gave them a great look at what various colleges offer. This month, we also have a trip planned to UMES Small Farm Conference for students interested in pursuing careers in agriculture. Finally, we're thrilled to announce that Jamari Savage, one of our talented art students, has a painting selected to hang in the state superintendent's office. What an incredible honor. Congratulations, Jamari.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. October is a spooky time of year, and we certainly have some spellbinding activities going on at Stephen Decatur High School. For starters, we've had some very special celebrations in the last couple of weeks, including the National English Honor Society induction ceremony. We're also excited for the Presidential Service Awards Ceremony, where we will recognize over fifty students for outstanding volunteerism on October seventeenth, and the Social Studies Honor Society induction ceremony next week. Homecoming, which was last week, went exceptionally well as we experienced outstanding participation for both our dress-down days and our after-school events, including homecoming volleyball, the lip sync competition, the annual Powder Puff Night, and the yearbook-sponsored homecoming dance this Saturday night. Meanwhile, our nine varsity fall sports programs are rolling, and our clubs and co-curricular programs continue to thrive. In addition to their orienteering competitions and visit to the Coast Guard Station, NJ ROTC members have been active at many of our school events with our color guard team performing the presentation of the flag and colors. The Key Club is busy planning a coat drive and a blood drive in November. Our Surf Rider Club is planning beach cleanups, and members of our Fellowship of Christian Athletes are planning a community build. Last but not least, Decatur Clubs and co-curricular programs are joining forces to host the third annual trunk-or-treat event on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth. We invite everyone in the room to join on in the fun and witness the special night that brings the community together. From the school counselor's office, school counselors held a senior parent night on October third, and they are currently busy preparing seniors for their time after graduation. On the testing forefront, SDHS has been extremely busy as well. We will be administering the PSAT nine to approximately three hundred seventy students tomorrow, and we will be administering the PSAT to the entire tenth grade, along with select eleventh graders next week, all together testing nearly eight hundred students in two weeks' time. Meanwhile, instruction continues to be meaningful and appropriately challenging for our entire student body. As we conclude our October notes, Stephen Decatur High School would like to thank all of our hard-working principals during National Principals Month with a special shout-out to our own Mr. Tom Sykes for his energy, enthusiasm, and dedication to our school. Best wishes to everyone for a warm and cheerful fall season. Now back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Lucas, thank you. Ryan and Teresa, thank you. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to bring us those reports today. We sincerely appreciate it. Now it's time to recognize any audience members joining us from the following organizations. Do we have anyone present from the WCTA? And I think we do. Good afternoon, Beth. The WCESPA, Worcester County Retired School Personnel. Hello, Helen. How are you, Helen? And representatives from various schools, PSYEX, PTAs, anyone here today? Thank you for being here. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. App because we have some community recognition and sports recognition. Dr. App?
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I'd like to ask Mr. Sam Slaycom to come up. It's always a great time to recognize and celebrate our student athletes, and with that, we will go ahead and get the program started.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's an honor to welcome you all to the Worcester County Public Schools Spring Sports Recognition Ceremony for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. Today, we gather to celebrate the hard work, dedication, and outstanding achievements of our student athletes. Whether on the field, track, or court, these young, these young athletes have shown incredible commitment, sportsmanship, and teamwork. Each of them has faced challenges, pushed their limits, and contributed to their teams in remarkable ways. We're excited to recognize not only the individual accomplishments, but also the spirit of collaboration and resilience that defines our athletic programs. Thank you to our coaches, families, and community members for your unwavering support. We look forward to honoring our athletes and all their hard work. In addition to that today, I'd like to thank the administration and athletic directors of all three high schools in our county. And then also, I would like to thank Ms. Charlotte Henry and Ms. Nikki Tatman, who this program would not be possible without the hard work of those two ladies. First up, I'd like to bring Mr. Derek Fuchs up here from Pokemoke High School.
Thank you, Mr. Slaycom. Board of Education, families, friends. It's my honor to be here today, and it's always an honor to be, come here and celebrate our student athletes. It gives me great pleasure today to honor some firsts, and I'm not going to steal anyone's thunder today, but I do want to say, out of the eighty-two athletes from the spring, eighty-five percent were all minds in motion, eighty-five percent of our eighty-two athletes. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Ms. Denasia Jones to come forth and introduce her team.
Hello. Okay, so I am going to be introducing the boys four-by-one track team. They won the first track state championship for Pokemoke High School this past season, so good job, boys. So here we have Jameer Roberts and Kaishawn Johnson. One of our kids away at college, the other one had to work, so this is half of our team. But yeah.
And now I want to introduce our girls' coach, Ms. Latoya Purnell, so she can give all of her awards.
Thank you. So today, I had the pleasure of announcing a few regional champs from Pokemoke High School. Our first regional champ is Ms. Aubrey Jackson Bowen. She is the regional champ in our one-hundred-meter dash and our two-hundred-meter dash. So she holds the championship title at Pokemoke High. Our next regional champ for the second consecutive year, Ms. Camille Williams, and she is our champ for the one-hundred-meter hurdles. And ladies and gents, we have another first-time for Pokemoke High School, the regional champs, four-by-two, one-hundred-meter, girls relay team. This is Ms. Curtisia Scofield, Ms. Haley Lane, and then Ms. Aubrey Jackson Bowen and Ms. Camille Williams as well.
And now let me bring up Ms. Sarah Welch, our softball coach, for her awards.
Hi, everyone. I am the softball coach over at Pokemoke High School. I have one athlete that I'll be recognizing today. Her name is Maddie Escham. She finished our season with a six-seventeen batting average, with adding five home runs, ten triples, and four doubles to her stats. She drove in over thirty-three RBIs and achieved a six-sixty-seven on-base percentage. And she even added defensively twenty-eight putouts and thirty-three assists. Next year, she's going to continue her softball career at Shenandoah University, while also pursuing a degree in speech pathology. So please join me in recognizing and congratulating Maddie Escham.
Moving on, next in our program, I'd like to ask Mr. Chris Atkins, Athletic Director from Snow Hill High School, to come up and join me.
Thank you, Mr. Slaycom. Good afternoon, Board. We had a tremendous spring season this year. We had multiple bayside champions, regional champions, and state champions in outdoor track. And to talk to about one of our bayside champions is Coach Bradley Kraus.
Good afternoon, everybody. So I'm here with Mr. Miles Martin. Before I give my quick spiel about Miles, I do want to give a special shout-out to a few other individuals that could not be here today because of their away at college. Mr. Zahim Kalik, Logan Hurney, Alexander Nelson, and Luke Donaway. They earned the bayside championship title in the four-by-four one-hundred-meter event, and then they went on to be also state champions in the four-by-two and a few individual events, and they went on to compete at the world-famous New Balance Nationals Championships meets as well. So special shout-out to them, even though they are not able to attend today. Mr. Miles Martin here was the bayside champion for shot put and was also very close to getting it for discus. He was the runner-up by less than a foot, so it's been great to watch him achieve at the highest level. I first got to meet Miles in band class his freshman year, two years ago, and I knew after the first week that he was going to go on to achieve great things. But to see what he has already achieved in just two short years is nothing short of incredible. It's been a pleasure to watch you grow as a musician, as a student, and if he's already here after two years, you guarantee you're going to see him back here many, many more times before his time at Snow Hill is over. So that's Mr. Miles Martin.
Our baseball team also had an incredible season and almost finished off a three regional championships in a row, just came up just a touch short. But to speak about one of our leaders on that team is a former, which hurts my heart a little bit, former head coach, Mr. Todd Laitman.
Thanks, Mr. Atkins. I'm here to introduce Mr. Finn Mahoney. He was first-team all-conference for us this year in the bayside. Finn hit four forty-seven for us. He's actually been catching, this is his third year there, he's a junior, but he's been catching since day one, since he walked in the building. So he hit four forty-seven for us, twenty-one hits, six doubles, fifteen RBIs this year. And the impressive stat here is he walked twice as much as he struck out this year for us. So that's good. That's what we need, baserunners. He also only made four errors in a hundred and thirty-nine chances behind the plate this year, and that's pretty impressive to only have those, as much as he handles the baseball during the course of a game. He's been to three straight regional finals, he's won two of them, and probably the most impressive stat for all of us, and especially for him, is that he was three-for-three in stolen bases this year. One thing I do want to say about Finn is about his work ethic. He had labrum surgery last summer and got cleared to play in less than a year. He worked his rear end off to get back, to get on the field to support not only the program, but his teammates. And on top of that, all those numbers are minus three games that he lost because of a concussion on a play at the plate this year. So impressive numbers for a young man who's got a great baseball future ahead of him. So congratulations, Finn.
Moving on in our program, I'd like to ask Mr. Dan DeBronz from Stephen Decatur High School to join us.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. We're going to first start off with our two coaches that won awards. First, we're going to start with our boys lacrosse head coach, who won twenty twenty-four Bayside Conference Coach of the Year. And then we have our girls' head coach, Lindsay Owens, who also won Bayside Conference Coach of the Year. All right, I'm just going to hand the mic right to Coach Owens, because we're going to go right to her team.
Thank you for having us. We had a great twenty twenty-four season. We went eleven-and-one regular season, thirteen-and-three overall. We were the 2A East Regional Champions, and we made it to the state semifinalists. We had the offensive and defensive all-conference players of the year in Sadie Kaufman and Addison McDaniel. We also had sixteen all-bayside-south honors, with seven of them being first team, eight of them being second team, and one honorable mention. Many of our first-team honorees are in college right now, but I do have two with me, and that is Maria Bella Moore's. Go ahead. Oh, yeah. Kennedy Kirby. Tara Foner. Elliot Windrow. Julia Gordy. Lily Carson. Addison Conley. Mara Mills. Ally Coleman. Lola Malinowski. And Savannah Howland.
All right, next, we're going to introduce Coach Hoffman, and he's going to do our boys' lacrosse awards. First, we have John Phoner. Jack Brady. Graham Geiser. Trey Strickler. Brody Lynch. Luke Popilowski. Ashton March. Gunnar Katner. And Declan Heran. And the rest of the team for region championship.
All right, next, we have our girls' softball coach, Scott Kurtz. He's Andrew's championship team, and Paul Martin's player. Thank you for having us today. First of all, our team went 17-5 on the season last spring, scoring 229 runs, only making up 65. Here we go. Our best team so far out there. We've won three consecutive regional championships now, and our current senior class has an opportunity to beat people in a row. And with that in context, we haven't won a championship regional since nineteen ninety-one. So they really left their mark on this school and this region. Proud of what they did on field, the culture and family, and they're all still on more ground than that. Last year's freshmen, current sophomores, I'll start with them. My regional championship teammate, Emily Nethworthy. Sophomores, last year, current juniors, with Kirby Bowles. And Emily Doom. Two juniors, current seniors, have a chance in the fourth row, Emily Smith. Well, this is four girls today that have a way to lead in three seniors. One junior, Bailey Griffin, Davis Nelsia, Julie Palmer, and Riley Smith. Riley Smith was first-team on Bayside, had a .451 batting average. She surpassed 100 hits for her career in the new season, very difficult team, one year ago, three home runs. And then with us today, we have Emily Doom, who was also first-team Bayside. Hit .397, 23 hits, seven doubles and home runs. And then one of our pitchers, record is 7-2, 70K, and 1.7.
Okay, next, we have our head baseball coach, Rich Farrow, and he will introduce our champions on the baseball field and some individual awards.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Rich Farrow from Stephen Decatur High School. Right here to my right, they're going to walk up here. This is the Bayside and East Region Champions from last year. Come on up, guys. They were the East Region Champions. We went to the final four, crossed the bridge, and lost a heartbreaker in the state semifinal. We're looking to repeat our successes with this group of returners. We did have one returning All-Bayside Player, Nate Brzezansky. He is right here to my left. He is a pitcher position. It's kind of the two-way player. He's headed to Mount St. Mary's on a baseball scholarship. And he was also a first-team All-Selection for the Bayside Conference. So here is our baseball team and our returning guys.
Okay, we're going to move on to our track and field. We had a couple athletes that were state qualifiers, and I'm going to hand it off to Brenda Hamor, our head track coach.
Hello and thank you. We've got two athletes that we want to recognize today. First, we have Lotus Wise. Lotus is ranked first team in the 3A East Division for the 200, the 400, the 400-meter hurdles, the long jump, and the triple jump. She was the Bayside Champion for the 400-meter and the triple jump, and she was a state qualifier for the 200-meter dash, in which she achieved 13th place. Long jump, she earned 10th place, and triple jump, 14th place. Lotus currently has two PRs that are contending for Decatur records. She's second place for all-time Decatur record for the 200-meter in a time of 26.32 seconds, which she hopes to beat that this coming season. And then in her 400, she is currently second place for all-time Decatur record. Her time is one minute. And now we have Solomon David. Solomon is first-team 3A East for both the high jump and the long jump. He was second-place Bayside Champ for the high jump and for the 3A East Regional Meet. He qualified for the states in the high jump, earning 13th place. And Solomon currently, his PR is currently ranked second place for all-time Decatur records. He jumped 6'2", which is just two inches from the Decatur record.
All right, and last but not least, Stephen Decatur Tennis Program, led by Mr. Jamie Greenwood.
Thank you very much. I have with us today Emily Ferguson. Emily is the 2A East Regional Champion for mixed doubles and state finalist for mixed doubles with Matt Beck. So we, first time in 20-plus years that we've had a state finalist for mixed doubles. They had a great win over Easton to win the region, and then had three great matches leading up to the final, and then faced a tough centennial team. But had a great experience and came off the court smiling. So congratulations to her.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education for your continued support of our student athletes and athletic programs at our high school. And one more round of applause for all these student athletes today.
So this is not spring sports, but it is kind of the educator's spring sports. We have a couple educators that we would like to recognize. Our first educator is Mr. Joshua Hamborski, if he would join us up front. Mr. Hamborski is the principal of Pokemoke Elementary School, and recently, the Maryland Association for Elementary School Principals announced that he is one of 14 principals who is honored with the 2024 Connected School Leader Award. And this school, this recognizes outstanding leadership and the remarkable ability to involve stakeholders in making decisions in the school. So we are very proud to have Mr. Hamborski as one of the 14 finalists and people who are recognized in the state. So we are proud of you, Joshua, and congratulations. And as you will see, talent just runs in this family. Our next person that we would like to recognize is his lovely wife, Ms. Cassidy Hamborski. Come on up, Cassidy. And actually, this summer, those of you may not know, but we do a wonderful program in our kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms. It's a Wilson reading program. And Cassidy has been instrumental in ensuring fidelity and the fact that our teachers are trained. And obviously, Wilson understood this, because she received the, let me get this correct, it was the Mary Ann Bonnu Award. And Mary Ann Bonnu was a special veteran teacher, a special education teacher that worked for Wilson for years. And when she passed away, they did an award just for her. And Cassidy was a recipient of this award this summer. And this award embodies Mary Ann's endless commitment to carrying out the Wilson mission in a collaborative effort to make reading a possibility for everyone. And again, Cassidy presented this award this summer at a conference that she went to, and we are just very proud to have Cassidy and all the work that she does in early childhood reading, as well as literacy throughout the grade levels. But congratulations, Cassidy. We're proud of you. And that should conclude our awards. And back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Appreciate that. Now, it's time for resolutions and proclamations. And I'm going to start with National Principals Month. I think Dr. Andy's going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. It's my honor to present this commendation to our building principals. National Principals Month, October 2024. Whereas each year, the month of October is designated as National Principals Month in recognition of principals, assistant principals, and other school administration for their steadfast commitment to ensuring that every child receives a quality education. And whereas principals and assistant principals are responsible for the day-to-day operation of their school, which includes leading the instructional program, acting as disciplinarians, managing educational initiatives, and building relationships managing educational initiatives, and building relationships with students, teachers, parents, community partners, and others to achieve excellence. And whereas principals and assistant principals work diligently to establish a positive tone for their school and provide a supportive and safe school environment where students learn, grow, and thrive. And whereas we are very, very proud of our principals and assistant principals and sincerely appreciate their ongoing efforts to inspire success in a lifetime of learning in Worcester County Public Schools and to promote the importance and value of public education in our community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Worcester County Board of Education is pleased to join other boards of education across the United States in proclaiming October 2024 as National Principals Month. And encourage the citizens of Worcester County to join in the celebration of National Principals Month by thanking all school administrators for the care and concern they show for our children each and every day. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes of the Board of Education adopted this 15th day of October 2024. Signed by Todd A. Ferrante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations. And I believe we have some principals and assistant principals in the audience.
Well, before we go into the next group, I want the community who's listening online and those in here, we have the most outstanding school leaders, both out of our central office and our principals running our buildings. They really have to put up with a lot of things to manage a building and to keep things going. And in Worcester County, we have outstanding principals. I can say that with conviction because I know myself and my executive team sitting here see it day in and day out. And I am grateful and appreciative for the job. Some of them are not here because they're tied up in building events right now, but the ones that are here certainly know that we would not be successful without their leadership. And that also goes with the leadership that comes out of the central office that works with them to make sure that our kids are learning at a high level and doing the work that they do every day. You want to know why we're number one and two in the state every year? You just saw a picture of about eight or 10 of them. That's why, because they hold teachers to high standards and they work their tails off each and every day, and I thank them for the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have National School Lunch Week. That's going to be read by Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. National School Lunch Week. After, you know, 43 years in the classroom, this was always my favorite week. It really, it really was. It really was. It probably could be National School Lunch Month, in my estimation, but the cafeteria workers work very, very hard in Worcester County. October 14th through the 18th, whereas the National School Lunch Program plays an important role in helping to ensure that every child in the nation is ready to learn because a hungry or undernourished child is less likely to be eager and attentive student. And whereas, the National School Lunch Program has demonstrated commitment to our child's health and well-being, serving nutritious lunch that are balanced for vitamins and calories, which supports healthy eating patterns. And whereas in Worcester County, all 14 public schools participate in the National School Lunch Program, directly supporting school success. And whereas the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful and creative food service administrators, managers, and staff working in cooperation with parents, teachers, community groups, government personnel, and students. Therefore, be it resolved that October the 14th through the 18th, 2024, be proclaimed as National School Lunch Week, a time to celebrate the importance of a program that helps keep students nourished so that they can learn. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes of the Board of Education adopted this 15th day of October 2024. Todd A. Ferrante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools.
While Otis is going back to his seat, I also want to say, we are the largest restaurant in Worcester County. We serve more food, more meals than any restaurant probably, any five restaurants put together here. And that guy's the one who leads it every day and makes sure, and he's pretty self-sufficient as far as financing goes, and he has to make it work. And since he's gone on board, our cafeterias are thriving financially. When I say thriving, we're paying for it. I don't think we're making money. I don't want that to get out there. But it's because of Otis's leadership and the things that he does to make that work. So Otis, thank you.
So next, we're going to move to National School Bus Safety Week. And Ms. McComas is going to, I'm sorry, Ms. Otis is going to read that one. School Bus Safety Week. You have school bus safety. I thought so. You have safety, you have safe schools and you have school bus safety. A little tied together, but Ms. Otis, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you so much. I am so excited to read the proclamation for National School Bus Safety Week. So whereas, "School buses are the safest possible vehicles for children according to state and national data. And whereas, the Worcester County Public Schools Transportation Department is committed to providing a safe, crash-free environment for the public school bus riders," Worcester County, "who travel daily on our roadways. And whereas, the exemplary safety performance exhibited each day by school bus operators on the roads of Worcester County ensures the highest level of safety for other motorists and student riders. And whereas, local citizens and organizations are encouraged to support student and traffic safety activities associated with National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through 25th, 2024. And whereas, motorists must remember to stop when a school bus has stopped with its stop arms extended and red lights flashing. And whereas, motorists should continue to be reminded about their role in ensuring the safety of children who are walking, bicycling, and getting off and on school buses. And whereas, during National School Bus Safety Week, everyone is reminded to keep out a watchful eye for students going to and from school, and to take extra precautions around students and school buses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Worcester County Board of Education recognize School Bus Safety Week during the week of October 21st through 25th, 2024. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes of the Board of Education adopted this 15th day of October 24, 2024. Signed by Todd A. Ferrante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools."
Can you have Kim Heiser come up front, please? Mr. Taylor, let's give a few comments.
I don't know if the public knows this or not, but she probably has one of the toughest jobs. And when we have bad weather, her day starts about 3:00 in the morning, out on the roads. So every time there's a questionable weather call, Kim Heiser's the first person out on the roads communicating with law enforcement, 3:00, 3:30 in the morning. And there's been times she has called me because I go to the gym early, and she says, "Are you on the road yet?" And I'm not. It's 4:00 in the morning. But she does a great job managing, organizing, and then a lot of times, she never leaves that office to the last buses delivered our kids for after-school programs. So it's very, very, very long days for Kim. And so, Kim, thank you for your leadership and what you do, and we're grateful to have you and the school bus drivers that we have here in Worcester County.
Thank you, Kim.
And now for National Safe Schools Week. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McComas.
I apologize. I had a cold this week. The ears are kind of clogged. Sorry, Katie. This is near and dear to my heart. We worked so hard last year with our safety task force and everything, and have such amazing data from our county, and I'm so thrilled about that. America's Safe School Week, October 21st through 25th, 2024. Whereas, schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens. And whereas, excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings. And whereas, the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence, such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools. And whereas, it is the responsibility of all citizens to enhance the learning experiences of our young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promote good citizenship, and generally make schools safe and secure. And whereas, all leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, should eagerly collaborate with each other and the National School Safety Center, a partnership of the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Department of Education, to focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. And whereas, numerous schools and school districts throughout the country, along with national programs, are among those innovative answers. And whereas, the observance of America's Safe School Week will substantially promote efforts to provide all our nation's schools with positive and safe learning climates. Now therefore be it resolved and proclaimed that October 2021st through 25th, 2024, is America's Safe School Week. And whereas, all state governors, attorneys general, superintendents of public education and legislatures, as well as the President, Attorney General, Secretary of Education, and Congress of the United States, all state and federal judges, civic, fraternal, legal, government, and professional associations, and all student and educators in America's schools are encouraged to formally adopt similar resolutions and proclamations so we may enthusiastically work together to make our nation's schools safe, secure, and peaceful places for learning and teaching and working, free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made part of the minutes of the Board of Education adopted on this 15th day of October 2024. Signed by Todd A. Ferrante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools.
I'd just like to make a few comments, both for Sergeant Valerio and our security officer, Sean Goddard. You guys work tirelessly to make sure that our schools stay safe, and I know that it's, there's never a day that goes by where you're not on top of things and that you make sure our students are in a safe learning environment. So I just want to say thank you for what you do for our students each and every day. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to individual and delegation's comments. All individuals who sign up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one or two minutes regarding information, commendations, or concerns, which may need future board attention. Concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed in open session and should be directed to appropriate district personnel for investigation. When you're called to address the board, please come, please speak into the mic so our live stream can hear it. Please state your name and address for the record. The first person we have on the list is Heather Byham. Welcome.
Hi, sorry I have to do all this.
No, that's okay.
Okay, my name's Heather Byham.
Wait, wait till you get into the mic. You're good.
My name's Heather Byham. I live at 14 Nottingham Lane, Ocean Pines. I wanted to address the fact of service learning, which basically, I'm sure you guys know, is mandatory volunteer work that's required for certain classes and for graduation. I'm new to this. My daughter's a freshman at Stephen Decatur. I've recently found out, when my daughter was told about this, that she had to select something. She wanted to do something with a disabilities commissioner that I know. They said, "No, it wasn't approved." Then she selected something from the paperwork. They said, "No, she couldn't do that because they're no longer a partnering agency." So then she selected something else. They said, "No, it's full." So I said, "Okay, provide me an updated list and the contact information." The principal, the IP coordinator couldn't provide it. Started asking questions. "Okay, if you can't keep track of who is and who isn't, and you can't keep track of their contact information, who's doing the background checks to ensure that our kids are safe? That, you know, you're asking us to send our minor kids off to do this volunteer work, which I'm all about volunteer work, but you're asking us to drop our minor kids off with these adults you know nothing about? No background checks." So I was directed to speak with Jessica McIerny, who's in charge of service learning for the district. "I'm a compliance officer for the state. I do everything via email. I want my paper trail." On my paper trail with her, the emails back and forth, she said, "There's no background investigations done on these community partners that you guys are asking our kids to work with." She said, quote, "Community partners agree to not knowingly employ a registered sex offender at the site where a Worcester County public student is placed." I said, "How are you ensuring that this is the case? Who's going back to ensure that they're being held accountable? That you're double-checking?" I'm like, "You can't even keep, you can't even keep track of who is and who isn't. You can't keep track of their contact information. How are you keeping track of these forms that you're asking them to sign? How are you keeping track of who is a sex offender and who isn't?" And those are my, that, this is something that needs to be addressed. I actually spoke to some Worcester County sheriffs, who I was informed that approximately 27 sex offenders have been arrested on school property this year. So that's just the school property. I was also informed by Maryland State Police Troopers that I know that it has been a significantly high number two. So if you're asking these kids to do this, you know, volunteer work, and these registered sex offenders know that they don't have to do background checks? You think it's not going to be like kids in a candy store?
Thank you. We will have somebody from the board office contact you.
Thank you, because I'm still waiting for Ms. Wallace to get up with me, and it's been two weeks.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Shockley Lynch.
Mr. Allman, you don't look like Ms. Stansberry. Nice to have you back. Good afternoon. My name is Beth Shockley Lynch. I live at 7744 Shockley Road in beautiful Snow Hill, Maryland.
It is on, sir.
Not close enough?
Just pull it closer to you. It's on.
Okay. Got it? Okay. Beth Shockley Lynch, 7744 Shockley Road in beautiful Snow Hill, Maryland. I also serve as the current president of the Worcester County Teachers Association. As you may know, we have an election coming up. Tuesday, November 5th is Election Day. Please exercise your right to vote. For the community's information, in August, WCTA and W- For the community's information, in August, WCTA and WCESP A held an official endorsement process. We have proudly endorsed three Board of Education candidates, Mr. Donald Spack, Ms. Elena McComas, and Dr. John Andes. These three candidates attended our interviews and participated in our application process. They all shared their undying commitment to our outstanding school system, to its betterment of the students, and its employees. It's critical that the right people sit in these seats. You will see apple ballots and signs out at voting places highlighting our support. I would like to note that the opponents in these three races did not seek our endorsement in any way. We find this a bit bothersome because in Worcester, we all work together for the betterment of all. And in failing to have conversations with any of our groups, the boots-on-the-ground people is cause for concern. Please consider that on November 5th when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak today? Seeing none, I'll move on to Dr. Wallace and the Curriculum Instruction Report. Dr. Wallace.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ferrante and the board. Our first presenter is Ms. Tamara Mills, who is going to come up and share a synopsis of our Outstanding Summer Academy and Stat Camp. I will share that Ms. Mills is one of our coordinators who does a plethora of different things, and she is a Jane of all trades. And she does an excellent job. A couple of years ago, I had a meeting with Melanie Purcell about Stat Camp, and the person who was running it wasn't doing it up to par. And we had a conversation, and I said, you know what? Let Worcester County Public Schools run that camp, because it's been one of my goals as the Chief Academic Officer, to include the trades in our Summer Academy, our skilled trades, and it's something that we've never been able to do. So I said yes, and Tamara was Tamara, because when I came and said to her, hey, I just said yes to this, she was like, I got it. And she has taken it and taken it to new heights, and they are very happy and excited for the work that we continue to do. So Tamara, thank you for your leadership of this, and I'll turn it over to you to share some information.
And whereas, no, I'm just kidding. Sorry. Thank you guys very much for having me. I'll start with our Summer Academy update, and then we will move into our Stat Camp update. So I just want to start us off with a few demographics around our traditional Summer Academy. I do apologize, one of the numbers is wrong in the version that you have. This says 1,167. It's actually just 167, so I'm sorry. But you'll notice that just trend-wise from last year to this year, we did go down just a bit in our participation of African-Americans and white students, but we went up in our special needs and multilingual students, which was awesome, because that's really where, those are our main target groups, and where we really need to get those kids ready for the next grade. And so we are down a little bit in numbers, because we had about 900 and something. This number, the 1123, reflects additional Stat Camp numbers, which I've never included the Stat Camp numbers in that Summer Academy total this year. I did. Our funding sources for last year, we did have a little bit of local operating funds, but primarily, our programs were funded through ARP tutoring grants, which is now exhausted, our 21st Century Community Learning Center grants, some of the end or leftover of pre-K enhancement grant money, and some end-of-the-year Judy Center funding that helps with our pre-K and K students. So those are our primary. We did have a little bit of summer supplemental as well, and a little sped compensatory, but those are ARP grants. So unfortunately, we don't have those funds anymore. But we're looking forward to still working, looking at more grants and figuring out how we can fund next summer. In regards to our curriculum, you'll see, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but you'll see the academic pieces, as well as some of the enrichment components from this summer. Our pre-K programs use Frog Street, which is an excellent curriculum for reading and math, but it also has what they call SKBs, Skills, Knowledge, Behaviors, and works on those things with students to get them ready for kindergarten. All of our programs kind of weave in a little bit of music, PE, or art to give the students, because six and a half hours of straight academics is tough for kids, as we know. We use a wonderful literacy program from ARC for our kindergarten students, where he's Ready to Rise, Hundred Book Challenge, things that they're familiar with during the school year, but we give it a little bit more of a fun twist, as we've talked about in the past. This year, our theme was around agriculture and farming for a lot of our middle grades. We try to pick a theme each year, and we know that agriculture is a big part of this area. We know that ultimately, we need more students going into agriculture and farming and aquaculture, so we did embed that. You'll see some pictures. And then at the high school, our program is always very different-looking, because all of those students have great needs. It's a half-day program, because they're also sometimes working. So we weave the academics into some things that we can help to get them there, right? So math and baking had an active, or a class. We do environmental science for students really interested in nature, and we do driver's ed and SAT prep and other things throughout. So I'm just going to go through quickly some pictures. I won't take too long on those, but they are in your slide presentation, and I'll just kind of highlight a few things that we loved. We have lots of students reading a lot through the summer. We have math programs that Sarah Blackburn does a wonderful job of preparing pre- and post-assessments for those math units for students. Our science, we try to make very hands-on, as I mentioned, a lot of partners. Those fun little things on the right are worms, so we got a lot of eww this summer, but that's fun. We took students to a few local farms. Cross Farms in Berlin was a wonderful partner and has been with some of the programs. They grew things, they touched animals, learned about them. You'll see the oyster farming picture in the center there. Students learned that. We also, again, had the Pokemoke Sanctuary Garden was a great place for students to go and learn about what's being grown. We even had a bee farmer that participated in our environmental science class, which is incredibly important to our environment. This year, the Made Men and Women Who Rise program is progressing and getting better and better each year. That is our partnership with UMS and Dr. Richard Warren, and really trying to get students, particularly students who are minorities, but really any young people, to try to get them into the teaching industry, the teaching profession. This year, for the first time ever, it was a residential program. So the students really got a taste of what's it like to live on campus, to go to the dining hall, to go to classes in a college classroom setting. And it was a wonderful experience for those students. As I mentioned, we do incorporate things with the arts. Again, that's one of the great things that gets students there, to get them to the programs. We had a podcasting class this year. It was a curriculum that we purchased through a grant, as well as a video, audio and video production class. So we kind of gave a segue into what's happening next door at the tech high school. And actually, the music video that the students wrote, sang, prepared, and is now turned into a commercial will be featured starting next week. So I will have lots of information for you on that. We're very excited about that. Again, music and the arts, the center, some of these pictures are around our Worcester County Arts Council partnership, where we bring the artists into the elementary schools. We ask them to, we always ask them to mimic our theme, so they had a farming theme this year. So they painted oyster shells, they made bags for the farmer's market and painted those, and so we try to keep that theme going with our students. And then throughout the day, some structured play and health and wellness in recess times as well. You'll see some freshman seminar classes to get those students ready to come into a new building and acclimate to a new environment. Driver's ed, college visits we do with our high school students through, this was through Maryland Leeds Funding last year. And then we have a great list of partners. This is not an exhaustive list, but some of our more formalized partners that we use. Questions around our traditional, we do have data that we're working on. MSD generally asks, requests our data in December. And because some of the data, post-data revolves around using some eye-ready diagnostics in the fall to try to check for summer slide, we don't have all of that yet. So the diagnostics are done, but we're still analyzing some data, and I can certainly provide, I'll provide that to Ms. Shorts and Dr. Wallace when that's available.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Any board members have any questions, Ms. Mills, regarding Mr. Buchanan?
Tamara, thank you for all the hard work that you put into this. I know it's a lot on your plate, but we appreciate everything that you do. The academy really is a great thing for the kids. I was fortunate that when I was still in the classroom, I taught, I think it was like five summers of the summer camp area like that. And I've said it in the past, is think about it. Kids go to school, you think that they're really excited about June coming up and getting out for the summer, but what they do is that regular school's out, and then they turn around and sign up for a Summer Academy all summer long, you know? So I can remember myself thinking, man, I'll be glad I'll have the summer to myself. I don't have to really do any studying or anything academic, but kids nowadays gravitate toward it, at least in Worcester County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other board members? Okay. Tamara, thank you for what you do for young people. This camp is great, and I looked at some of the pictures, and you can see from the expressions how thrilled they are to be doing what they're doing out there. Looks like a lot of fun.
Thank you. It does say a lot about our teachers and our school leadership that the kids want to be there. They really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to move into our Stat Program. I want to recognize Ms. Nancy Schwendeman, who's out there in the audience. You can wave. She is one of our amazing partners from the Economic Development Office. And thanks to the commissioners who provide the funding for this program. It is an exploratory program. It is academic in nature, but it is also very enrichment-based and allows students to explore skilled trades, agriculture, tourism, and technology here in Worcester County, to really help build our base here for kind of homegrown industry. So just a quick overview, again, it's available to students in rising eight through 12. There are two camps, or two, students can choose two pathways within the two camps. So ultimately, they can have an opportunity of four different experiences if they go the full-time. It is very much focused on rural economy and community professions, as I mentioned. We have grown from five pathways and about 60 attendance, or attendees, sorry, to 12 pathways and over 120 attendees this year. So it's been a wonderful experience, and I cannot thank them enough for their partnership in this. Nancy and myself worked together. We also have Artie Sangwan, who's a fantastic site director for the program, and Laverne Cray this year, who was the new assistant principal at Mr. Bevelacqua's school, and kudos to him, too, for opening those doors. She's been a big help with that program this year, too. So you'll see our pathways up here. This new this year was aquaculture and oyster farming, masonry and ag science, as well as plumbing, which actually was a great program. I'll tell you about that in just a second. For assessment data, we, our goal was to have 100% of the students score an 80% or higher on the Stat Skills Assessments. We were close. We got 90% of our students scoring an 80% or better. And even though we didn't meet that goal, I am really excited and happy about 90% of our students meeting, having the skills necessary to progress in that profession or within that course, if it's something they want to do. New last year, Nancy and I worked together to put, and this was her idea, I'll give her the credit, she said, why not bring some of Stat into the after-school program as well? So we are, last year, we started with a 3D printing class that was at Snow Hill High School in the after-school program. That's going to run again this year, and we're hoping maybe to add even one more. So a program from Stat could then be repeated during the school year, so you get more students or different students who might want to take advantage. And we don't have scores on that yet, because after-school's still running. We did do a survey. I'm going to just kind of let you look at the results. The students, this is from the students' experiences, we had, I would say about a 75% rate. It was about every three out of four students did do the survey for us, which is great, because you know how surveys are, that's, you know, that number's pretty high. And overwhelmingly, they really love the program. Where we do have a little bit of work to do, and we kind of know this, is in our lunch and learn sessions. Some kids really love them, but some kids are just not responding to that quite as well as we'd hope, so we want to continue improving that and working on that. Some of the quotes, one of the students said, I got to do so many things I've never done before, and the teachers were nice. Some students talking about their actual experiences and learning how to stick weld and using plasma cutters, things I don't really even know what they are. Some really enjoyed carpentry. The Criminal Justice and Forensic Science Program is always very well-received. Meeting people from other schools was always a big draw to the students. And some students who have been there for multiple years love the fact that we're trying to add something new or different each year so that they can continue participating. And then we also survey our parents, so making sure that they also are satisfied with the program. We don't ask them the question about lunch and learns, because they're not there, but overwhelmingly, we are, I think, doing pretty well in hoping, in meeting their expectations for the program. Couple of parent feedbacks there. I'll just read one or two. It says, this camp is teaching my son new things and keeping his mind engaged. We love it. Another one said, we really, that the camp's really helped him build his self-confidence. He was excited to come home and tell us about what he's had done each day. So it says a lot when a teenager wants to come tell you things. For our lunch and learn partners, you'll see the list of partners that we had there. Basically, they do a 30-minute lunch and a 30-minute lunch and learn, and they swap. And the students learn about the profession, the business, the organization, whoever is presenting that day for 30 minutes. And then we had some new teaching partners this year. Normally, it's staffed by Worcester Technical High School staff. However, there are some times when we need to go outside and really look into the industry, since it is, you know, we're looking for those industry partners. So Captain Creach from Snow Hill Volunteer Fire Department did the fire science course this year, did a fantastic job. And one of our new exciting partnerships for Stat was Seaside Plumbing. We were actually able to get the students from the tech high school. We would drive them over to the seaside lab. They have a full educational plumbing lab in their business in Berlin, and they worked with them, brought them back, and then did the same thing with the afternoon students. The kids really, really enjoyed it. So that is an update on our Stat Camp. So, and again, thank you, Nancy, and the entire Economic Development Office, and Melanie Purcell, and all those folks, and the commissioners who have worked hard to make sure that this is successful.
Board members have any questions regarding Stat Camp? Dr. Andes.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Tamara, thank you to you and your entire team. I had the opportunity to visit Stat Camp. I wish Stat Camp had existed a long time ago, when I was in high school, a very long time ago. And I might have chosen a different pathway in life. I don't know, but great job, well done. Thank you so much for making it possible. Thank you to our county commissioners for funding it and for the leadership team to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the board's support as well.
Thank you, Tamara. Appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shorts for the Blueprint update.
Very brief update again this month. Not a whole lot happening with Blueprint. We are still waiting, and I believe I shared this with you last month. We have one lingering question, our question 23 that we're waiting for feedback on, and Mr. Tolbert and myself and Mr. Cook, or Dr. Cook, are anxiously waiting for that, and will continue to keep you updated on that. I believe I actually shared the actual question with you all last month. We continue to work with Afton, who is our strategic partner through the AIB. We've set up weekly meetings with them now. There'll be 30-minute weekly meetings on Monday afternoons, so we'll continue our work with them and keep you posted on how we're doing with them. Again, we're working with them on two major pieces. One is minimal school funding, which is part of Pillar Five. That's the 75% of funds following our students to the schools and working on the career ladder piece with Pillar Two and the $60,000, or $60,000 opening salary for our beginning teachers by 2027. So we continue to work with them on those two pieces. And tomorrow, Mr. Bevelacqua's School has an ERT, an Expert Review Team Visit. It's a slightly different visit than what we had last year at our three elementary schools. It's with the CTE team, and they'll be with Mr. Bevelacqua's School all day long with quite a few people visiting, and I'm sure learning from Worcester Technical High School, as well as we hope to pick up a few pointers from them. So we look forward to welcoming them tomorrow. So that is our Blueprint update, unless there's any questions from the board.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Shorts.
Back to you, Mr. Ferrante. Thank you.
Now I'm going to go back to Dr. App for the Administrative Operations and Personnel Exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. In front of you, you have the October Personnel Exhibit for your consideration. New hires, Josiah Ballard, Educational Assistant, Pokemoke Elementary School, Stacy Rossi, Educational Assistant, Berlin Intermediate Educational Assistant, Berlin Intermediate School. Leave of absence, Shelby Lane, Occupational Therapist, Assistant, Ocean City Elementary School. Superintendent recommends approval of the Personnel Exhibit as presented.
Thank you, Dr. App. Can I have a motion and a second to prove the Personnel Exhibit as presented?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. McComas and a second by?
Second.
Mr. Buchanan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, stay with you. Dr. App?
Thank you. For the board's information, we are announced, last month we announced our, the board's negotiating teams. This month, WCTA and WC ESPA have given us their negotiating teams, and we're going to read those for the record today for your information. The Worcester County Teachers Association Negotiation Team this year is Beth Shockley Lynch, Michelle Hunley, Danae Bowen, Mary Hathaway, Mary Beth Lantman, and John Carnahan. For the support team, it's Ivory Smith, Ted Brown, Carol Campbell, Ashley Smith, Chanel Robbins, and again, John Carnahan, that's for your information.
Wonderful. And now again, Dr. App, I'm going to stick with you for a comprehensive maintenance plan.
Well, thank you. I'm going to ask that Mr. Slakem come forth and talk to us about the comprehensive maintenance plan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Slakem. Is that on? There we go.
Got it on now.
Okay.
It's a slightly less enjoyable topic than the athletics one we were, I was up here for previously. So each year in October, we are required by the Interagency Commission on Public School Construction to submit a comprehensive maintenance plan to them, which highlights some of our, some of our practices here in the county, gives data related to, you know, what we do in the maintenance department, our staffing levels, basically anything related to, to what happens in maintenance. You know, this year we've compiled, you know, that report for, for your consideration today. On behalf of the superintendent, we recommend approval of the 2024-2025 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and authorization to move forward with submitting that to the Interagency Committee for Public School Construction.
Thank you, Ms. Slakem. Any questions for Mr. Slakem on the comprehensive maintenance plan? If not, since the superintendent's recommended this, I need, can I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and an authorization forward to the Maryland Interagency Commission on School Construction?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes? And a second by Ms. Addis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Slakem.
Mr. Ferante, I just wanted to thank Sam and the entire team for putting that report together. If you want to know anything about Worcester County public schools and our facilities, it's in that report. So I thank you for the comprehensive nature of that report, pulling it all together and giving us a picture of our school facilities and our needs, so thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Dr. App.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is small projects requests for FY 24-25. I wanted to give a little bit of background to the, to the board of how these requests actually occur. In the years when Worcester County government has some supplemental funding, we are able as a school system to request for one-time capital expenditures that are less than $250,000. We have, Sam and I gathered information from around the school system of projects that we thought might be worthy of the ask, we put those together, we ran those through the executive team. We also rank those and prioritize those with life and safety projects being the highest priority. About two or three weeks ago, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Slakem, myself, and Mr. Price had a meeting with the leaders, and Todd had a meeting with the leadership at the county government, including Mr. Bertino, Mr. Bunting, and staff there, Mr. Young as well, where we refined this list even more. So the list in front of you today has the, it's numbered one through 20, and that list was a collaborative discussion between county government officials and us, and that 20 items has made it to your list today. So that's how that came to be, we will be happy to answer any questions about their small projects list.
They are, they were not agreed, let me make it clear, the commissioners did not agree to fund those, but agreed for us to turn those in for their consideration. They didn't guarantee us funding that day, but they said, turn these in for their consideration.
They had many questions, we gave them the explanations of why they were there and why we had presented them to them. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what they were, if there are any questions, please.
I got, I'm sorry, I actually have quite a few questions, so bear with me. All of these on this list, were these by chance submitted to the IAC first for the small projects list that they had asked of us, I believe it was last April when they came to meet with us, that they suggested that we compile a list of all the different needs that we have so that it helps them potentially get us more money? Has that been, have these been submitted, or they, do they apply or do they not apply?
Some of them that don't qualify, they're allowed in. Yeah, so the list that's in front of you is not the complete list that we sort of have as a running reference point for those sort of requests. A lot of the requests that were on that original list, the much larger list, are included in the CIP request, I believe Mr. Price is bringing that back for revision today after, after, you know, we're here. The IAC will not fund some of the items that are on this list specifically because they're either below the funding threshold of, which is required by the state, or they don't have a long enough life, and for instance, some of the camera systems don't have a long enough life, they need to last longer than 20 years for the IAC to consider funding for them.
But the ones that, the projects that did make the list that we could bundle, we met with the leadership and we agreed to bundle them, and that's what you'll be voting on in the updated CIP.
Gotcha, okay. And then I have a couple of questions on, on certain project items on this list, as far as all of the security cameras and the vestibules, the security vestibules, have you reached out to the Sheriff's Department for their suggestions on, are these good items to add? Do they find the, the need for these, or are there other things that they would think would be better fit for us?
I'll, I'll let Dr. Wallace, because we had a school safety committee, you, we had a school safety committee that reviewed some of those, and I think the Sheriff's Department had representatives there, was a part of that.
Okay. You want to mention Sean? I'll let, I actually, I'll let him.
So we reviewed this entire list with Mr. Sean Goddard.
Okay.
You know, I can't speak for Mr. Goddard about what level of involvement he had with the Sheriff's Department, but a lot of these items are things that are direct products of our school safety committee and requests, as well as best practices in, in school safety.
Okay. And then specifically with the Buckingham Elementary School security cameras, I'm just curious if we, how is that going to work moving forward? If we do the new construction, would they, would we save them, or do we, okay?
So that, the camera system that's there is well beyond its useful lifespan, and we have sort of a gap potentially in security in that school. You know, the harsh reality of it is, we're probably five years before New Buckingham falls out of the sky.
Right.
And we actually have all the new systems that are related to that. The in-between time, we felt it was, it was prudent to look at putting a security camera system in that school. All of the equipment, obviously the labor to install, you know, is, is going to be forfeited when we demo that building. All of the equipment that is installed is just like all the equipment that we have elsewhere throughout the county. Those cameras can either be re-appropriated and installed in other schools, they can be kept as spare parts, but they will not be discarded in any way.
And then as far as the Shaw Elementary School system, with that being a pretty new school system, did we not get the upgraded cameras right away and now we're trying to switch over, or?
So from the time that Shaw was designed until when it was built, the county has sort of adopted a, a comprehensive look at security cameras for the county.
Okay.
That building was just ahead of when all those decisions were made and we adopted a standardized platform for all of our buildings. We are not, we're not taking out all of the cameras that are in that building, we are simply changing the server and the head end to bring it on to the platform that all of our other buildings are on.
Okay. And then as far as the, the security vestibules, I only see, one, two, three, four, five, well, five, sort of six schools with the combination, but can you explain how you came to those schools versus the other schools?
Those are the only five buildings that don't have them currently.
That don't have one, okay, so that's just where that's coming from. And then, so thank you for that. And as far as, let's see here, I have so many notes, I'm sorry. Are those in any way, shape, or form, as far as the security aspect, are we able to find any grants?
No, we receive one safety grant, just about $200,000, that's what we'll be using for one specific project that it's been written for. But beyond that, I mean, we're always looking for extra grants, in fact, Brian Cook is always, and I know he, he works with Dr. App's department as well, always looking for like new innovative grants, but our other grants are around staffing that we provide to the Sheriff's Department, so we don't have any extra grant money that we could toss at this.
Perfect, okay. And then my next question, I have two more line item questions, would be for the all school radio system. Can you kind of give me an outline of what those radios are used for currently and what that money would be going towards?
Yeah, so one of the specific requests that we've had and discussions that we've had from the Sheriff's Offices around radios and active communication at all times, because if we ever did, and we pray that we don't have a worst-case scenario, often cell phones are jammed and there's not enough signal to get through, and so currently, all of our schools are sort of on different radio systems right now, and they are not robust enough to have signals throughout the school. So this would put us, everybody in the school district having the same radio, and it would be active in all areas of the school, so if there ever was an emergency. Now, in all of the other times, they're used all day, every day, they aren't, in fact, some of them probably left their buildings and could have their radios, does anybody have their radio on their person right now? Yep, there you go. So like, as a principal, you don't even go to the bathroom without your radio, you go in the bathroom with your radio. So it is our main point of conversation in the school around all things at all times. That could be, hey, somebody's at the front door that I don't know, or hey, somebody just threw up in Mr. Tolbert's classroom, can a custodian come clean it up?
Mr. Tolbert.
It's an all-purpose radio, but he wasn't the one who threw up, it was a kid, so it's good.
So that's just kind of answered my next question, which is, these radios are not necessarily piecemealed per the school, you're trying to create a all-county-wide radio system?
No, everyone's going to have the same radios throughout, right now we are piecemealed and we're, some schools have some radios, like they would all show you radios and I bet you they all be different right now because schools have been purchasing them throughout time. Some schools have more funds than other schools have, so they can purchase nicer radios and other schools can purchase, so this will get us all with radios that are up to the standard that we need them to be up to to communicate through all points of the building.
And how many radios do we think that that'll get us?
I don't remember off the top of my head, that, that figure was supplied to me by Mr. Goddard, who did a survey of all of our buildings.
Okay.
Sean's here, he can. I have a number in my head, but.
Sean, just come up here if you're going to speak, thanks. Thanks. And, and just to be clear, these radios are meant to be just for local communication at the school level. These are not our emergency responder, first response radios. These are meant, again, like Dr. Wallace gave the description about needing a custodian in a particular classroom, these are meant to expedite and give good communication for our school-based staff to be able to communicate with one another during the school day.
Okay.
And our deputies also have one. So our, our school deputies, our SRDs in our buildings have the same school radio that they communicate with everyone else on.
Okay.
Without the numbers in front of me, I believe it's about 35 radios per school.
Oh, okay.
Yep, some schools may have just a 10.
So these are more or less like office radios, not per, per teacher?
Yeah, but they're more robust, they're higher wattage, and the, the coverage on them is phenomenal.
Okay.
No dead spots within the buildings.
Okay, great. And you, you sort of touched on another question of mine, which is leading towards another question on grants, and have you looked into any sort of grants that could potentially be like FEMA-style grants, or state or federal grants where schools can technically be considered shelters during a time of an emergency? So being able to use these radios in multiple capacities for not just the school system, but also for the county in case an emergency arose, is there any chance of looking at any sort of grants like that?
Brian, Dr. Cook is on multiple listservs as well as government listservs for every grant that comes out. I know federal government grants, because we've looked at them before, because I think he just wrote one for maintenance, so he is on that list as well. I will say, Dr. Andes very often sends us grants, because he's on a listserv, most of the time we are, already, already have those grants and we, we may be thinking about applying for them, but yes, we are literally, I mean, and Ms. Shorts can attest to this too, we are in record-breaking ground with how many grants we've written, and we continue to look, and if anyone certainly like runs across a grant in another way, we would absolutely like be totally interested.
Considerate, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And then, I'd like to touch on the subject matter experts as far as, so the safety, I asked if you were reaching out to the Sheriff's Department, who is Sean Goddard, that you spoke to about the safety requests. And I guess my next question for this is, have you reached out to any of like the emergency services department in our county for, if, if the radios that you're interested in buying, if they're a good type of radio, or what their subject matter expert suggestion or opinion would be on these types of radios?
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Sean speak to this as well, but we didn't enter into any of these suggestions without engaging our, our vendor partners and our law enforcement and emergency response partners before we came up with any of this stuff.
And Sean, when you, after you get done speaking of that, can you speak back to Ms. Addis's question regarding consulting the Sheriff's Office on the vestibules and things like that? Because I think that you did.
We actually have another radio meeting scheduled this coming Tuesday at 1:00. Being retired from the Sheriff's Office, have a great working relationship with them, as we all do, and we communicate quite a bit. The radios that we're looking at don't have any dead space, they're good communicating radios, and then our, our schools also have like the 911 radios, where we have at least two in, in the buildings, so I am discussing with them. Going back to the grants a little bit, it's funny because on the weekends, Brian, Dr. Cook and I will be sending each other texts, message, hey, did you see this grant? Can we put in for it? I believe we're putting in for it again this year, we put in for it last year, there was a $500,000 grant, and it was just for communication. Unfortunately, no one in the state of Maryland got awarded that grant. We're going to try to use that one again this year, and then we could, you know, up our radios even better than what they are.
Perfect.
Those are competitive brands, though, so often times, the brands I was speaking to are pastime brands. Can you also speak to?
Can you also speak to, working with the Sheriff's Office on what was on this list?
Yes.
The vestibules?
And what topic?
The vestibules.
Oh, the vestibules, yes. The, we call them catches, the vestibules are a great line of defense, if by chance someone were to get through a front door, they just had that second door. So when they're doing their, they went through and had a safety grant and asked them to take care of it this year, doing our school reviews and safety reviews, that's something that came up on there, you know, we have a few schools that did not have those, those catches, as we'll call them. So discussing that with Dr. Wallace and Sam, that's something that we put in for to try to get the, get the funds to be able to, those schools that don't have those catches, that we can get those in place and installed.
Okay, and then just another question too with the safety aspect is, I know there was a lot of discussion last year when we were in our task force meetings with the sheriff and state's attorney as far as potentially looking at having some sort of like a weapons detection system, but I don't see any of that on this project list, is there, is that in any of our future discussions, or where are we at with that?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to continue to discuss that with our safety committee, which the Sheriff's Office is a part of, and will, that'll continue to be a point of discussion that at some point we could potentially bring to the board as an option on the table. You guys have a word for it, and it's not layers in the law enforcement community, what do you call it when you put the different?
It will, layers, we call, I call it blankets, different blankets of.
Different, like blankets of security that we add, so what we're looking at is just continuing to add pieces to that. A weapons detection system is another piece that can be added to that. So we, we are constantly looking at every option as we move forward with our safety committee.
Okay. And then my last line item is the BOE LED lighting. As far as, is that just the Board of Education building, or is that all schools and?
That is just the Board of Education building, so the Board of Education building is not eligible for any IAC funding or any other grant or local funding because it is, there's no children here.
Okay.
So in order to, you know, perform those, you know, those upgrades, we need to, you know, depend on our government partners to be able to give us the money to do that. We are not a Delmarva power school here, so we are, there's no rebates available or anything like that.
Okay, so we, we don't have Delmarva power, we're chop.
This is a. This is a chop-tank electric school.
Chop-tank, okay.
Or building, excuse me.
Depending on where they're located?
Yep, we have, we have three power providers for, uh, our electric, for all of our schools. We have Towne of Berlin, we have chop-tank electric, and we have Delmarva Power.
So the, the Board of Ed building, which, where this number is coming from, that's chop-tank related, so it doesn't have Delmarva Power associated with it? Okay. All right, well, you guys have taken care of all my questions. Thank you.
Dr. App?
I believe that concludes our portion here today.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the update. Thank you. And now, I'm gonna ask Dr. Wallace to give us some policy revisions.
And I, I would get in big trouble if I went back to my office and I didn't thank Nikki Tapman, uh, the maintenance assistant, for her help with compiling the comprehensive maintenance plan. She's the heartbeat of my department, and I couldn't have done it without her.
You make sure we said thank you to Ms. Tapman. Thank you, Mr. Slakem. Dr. Wallace?
Good afternoon. Um, before you, you have a couple of policy updates. Um, I've talked to you since August. My office, um, along with a few others, my assistant, who's here, Callie, um, who helps me, uh, greatly with this work, um, as far as the organizational side of it. Um, we were gonna bring all of the policy updates to you in August. There ended up being some holdup on our editing side. Um, and one of the decisions that we made was that it wasn't a good idea to bring all the policies before you in August, because there was quite a few updates that needed to be made. Um, and so we're gonna sort of bring them to you in small chunks. Um, what I will do is, um, I'm gonna go through each of these policies with you. They are very brief edits to them. I'll go over the edits with you. Um, and then I will ask you to approve the policy revisions. If there's a policy at that time that you would, like, pulled out and talked about separately, like, because you don't want, someone may have a concern about approving it, you can ask for that to be removed, and we'll go through it that way. If that works for you, Mr. Ferrante. Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Perfect. So the first policy you have there before you with some updates is a simple, um, language update around specifically multiple times throughout this document. Um, the word vocational is removed. We do not use the word vocational anymore. So career and technical, um, is there, replacing those words. And then you see one other edit in number four of Part A that says, um, instead of serving as an ex officio capacity, um, the principal will serve as a member of the committee. Um, so the principal will be serving as a member of that advisory council, not as an ex officio capacity. Um, we feel like the principal's voice is an important voice to be heard on that committee, and that they should be, um, an official member of that committee. Then you can just see the rest of it is just the word vocational throughout it is changed. The second policy before you, that has one small edit on the second page, um, if you remember back in 2019, some of you were on the board then, MSDE put out a requirement that we create an educational equity policy. Um, Dr. App did a significant amount of work on that policy at the time. And essentially, different from many other policies that MSDE passes down, many times MSDE passes down, and they say, hey, you have to create a policy on this. MSDE did far more than that when they did the educational equity policy. They said, hey, you are gonna do an educational equity policy, and it's gonna be all these things. And Dr. App can correct me if I'm wrong, but he essentially took the document at the time, and we adopted what MSDE said we had to adopt. We did not do any additions. Dr. Brown is now in charge of equity. He found that, um, when comparing Comar and our equity policy, that we were missing two definitions from Comar. And so he has added those two definitions under the definitions part, and it defines what the word educational opportunity and equity lenses, that's not our language, that's MSDE language. Again, that's a policy that's required for us to have, and is very specific around what has to be in that policy. The next policy revision is around student attendance. It adds the word step sibling in as a lawful cause of absence. Um, that was just somehow something that we've never had in our policy. So step sibling has been added. Um, that is the only change to that policy. And then we have the attendance policy after that. These were requirements, um, around some reporting that we need to do from the state. Um, and so what we had to go to was a specific way of calculating student attendance hours. And so this gives the actual percentage that matches up with the reports that we need to report to the state. So you can see there, instead of more than four hours, it says 51% of the school day. And then for any, uh, given course at the high school level, five unlawful absences during one grading period, we call them course terms at this point with our power school, and so that word is a wording change. It does not change the language or the intent of that policy at all. That's the same as what we've been doing. We just need to make sure it aligns with power school language. And then the final is a school vehicle behavior policy. Um, and there you see the word bus is replaced by vehicle, because it is a school vehicle. Um, and then you can see there at the end, Part E was taken out, because what we did is we just, it's just listed there in what used to be F, that's now going to be A. So we're not talking about specific, um, consequences there, just in cases of misconduct. This is how things will be handled. So there's not, um, specific ways that we're gonna deal with it in our policy. So that would be the only one that, that there's a spirit of that. Dr. App is here. I was gonna say Ms. Heiser was here just a minute ago. But essentially, well, the, the focus is to create a policy and direct the superintendent to create the specific things that come after it. So taking that out is sort of in the spirit of the way that policies are intended to be written. That's the last one.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Any, uh, board members have any questions, uh, regarding the updates and the policies that Dr. Wallace has gone over with us?
Uh, I have a question on the equity.
Sure.
Policy. Um, looking at the Maryland Code regs, the 13A dot O1 to O6 dot O3, it's a lot more bare bones, I guess you would say, with what Comar has written in. So our policy is actually a lot more extensive than what is written in Comar, and I'm just wondering.
We were sent guidance from MSD, and I'll let Dr. App speak to that, but I, I believe he copied and pasted from our regulations that we were, and guidance we were sent from MSD. So when Comar is put out, MSD then send us, sends us guidance that we are directed to follow, and so that's what we did.
I guess I'm just a little concerned, because why are we voting on a policy that's mandated by the state?
Because this policy, because the state mandated that you have to vote on this policy and put it in your policy. That's what the state said.
So it's not really a vote for us to make?
There is, there are few, well, I would say there are probably many times, and Dr. Andy's could speak to the history of it more than me probably, or Mr. Taylor, because they've certainly been in, in Dr. App in these roles more, but there is many times that MSD says that you will create a policy. It is not something that is, that, that is new to this policy. It is, it is a regular occurrence that MSD does that. It's not something that's different, because it's equity.
And did anyone ask when, because this I saw was dated back from 2019, what was the purpose of this policy? Because were we not doing the things that are in this policy up until that point?
The purpose of the policy was because in November of 2019, MSD and Comar required that we, that we put in, we have a policy and that the policy says this. That's, I mean, it, it's not like, hey, you have to follow these rules. It's literally, it says, you have to create a policy, and these are the things that MSD gave us the guidance around, had to be included in our policy. We have many policies. Dr. App, you can back me up on that, that MSD says you have to create a policy on this. So I mean, that's, it's, yeah, that's a normal practice.
Each year, you know, after the legislative session, there's at least one or two incidents of, of this, where we would have to create some type of policy. And again, we get guidance from MSD, um, of what has to be in that policy. So do I agree with you that maybe it's, you know?
Redundant?
It's redundant, yes, but it's, it's a requirement that we have to follow.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Wallace regarding these policies? Okay.
I would like to pull that policy out, because I'm voting separately on that one.
Sure.
Right, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll go with the three policies. First, Ms. Addis, um, the enrollment attendance, the, um, community engagement, the behavior discipline, uh, the C's are, um, and the, and I'll go ahead, those three.
CTE.
And CTE. I'll ask.
And school bus vehicles.
And school bus vehicles, school vehicle behavior, excuse me. I'll ask for, for a motion and a second on those policies first. Board, you still with me?
So moved. Motion.
Okay, motion. Motion by Ms. Addis, and a second by Dr. Andy's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I'll come back to the equity and opportunity policy. I need a motion and a second to approve that, uh, revision as well. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gordy?
I'm gonna second it. Can I speak to it?
I'll, after your second, I'll have discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'll open it up for discussion.
This is really part. Hello?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. This really is the frustrating part for me also. Um, we are dealing with having spent years asking for local flexibility on a lot of things, and this is a state that really does top-down. Whether it's law or mandate, we are required, unfortunately, to kind of abide by that, because otherwise, they do have the ability to come in. Either restrict state funds, which isn't a great big deal for us, unfortunately, um, but if it got to a point where we ended up being really, um, stopping the state from doing this, this, and this, they actually have the ability to come in and remove our superintendent and us. Um, I don't think that would ever happen, but I also understand the, the probabilities of the fact that, yes, we, we honestly have to deal with this, and then on our local level, work to minimize whatever it is we need to minimize. Um, I've seen this over the years, so.
I, I just wanna make a comment to that. Uh, I appreciate you saying that. But at the same time, um, Ms. McComas, you and I were both in the same task force meetings when we had the educational law expert lawyer come down and speak with us. And Rochelle, yep. And, um, she even said, because there were certain policies that all of us in that room were shaking our heads on, like, how can this possibly be? And, and she had made the case of, we as a Board of Education could band together with other boards of education to go to the state to make our claim that that doesn't need to be there. And so we can lobby the legislature, um, to change the law within Comar, and, and so the issue isn't whether we can or can't do this. As a voting member of the Board of Education who is elected in by the people of our districts, we, we do have the right to say no. Um, it's, it's just that we need to decide whether or not we want to. And to me, it's not, I'm not going to have the state tell me you have to do something.
Well, we have already, excuse me, we have gone to the state. We have spoken. We have gone as a group. We have asked for local flexibility. This is, it's not, this is not new. I mean, we really have pushed back in many ways. And, um, understanding where we're at now, I get your frustration, trust me. I was there. Um, and my whole goal now is to minimize whatever it is I need to minimize, and make sure my concerned parents have their rights, because that's the piece that's important at the moment, until we get a change in Annapolis.
Well, all I'm saying is, if, if you don't agree with it, then you should vote not to agree with it, not because it is what it is. Otherwise, it's a rubber stamp vote. Once again, it's a rubber stamp vote. If we are required to vote, then why are we here to vote if, if it doesn't mean anything? So.
So I just wanna make a comment. Um, right now, this policy is currently in place. We're add, making two additions to it. Number D and number E. Okay, those are the only two additions that we're making to it. And I would say to both of you that this fight is bigger than at this Board of Education. This fight is for our delegates, representatives from this county, to go to the Maryland Legislature and lobby on our behalf to take these things out if they so desire. But, um, we're only adding at this point two things. We already have this policy in place, so is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gordy?
I, 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 I understand the point that we don't want to be dictated to by the state, but are we objecting to the policy? Or are we objecting to the, the mandate from the state? If, this is, we're voting on a policy, not where it came from. This is, this is a policy for our schools, for our students, for our teachers, for us to follow. And, uh, if it came from the janitor's closet down the hall, or from the state, it's still good, solid policy that we need to, to think about enacting, I believe. And the, the state board is, they're what they are. We, we keep, we're not gonna change that overnight, so. This, this policy deals with our schools, our students. If I, and I am of the belief that if our staff has researched this and endorsed this, then I'm fully behind it.
Any other discussion, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to look at things that we vote on, uh, because our position is really nonpartisan. Board of Education is a nonpartisan elected position. And, you know, anything that we deal with has to deal with a consensus of our constituents, you know what I mean? So my personal opinion of it, or your personal opinion, um, that's not the important part. It's what the people that are in our, our district think about, you know? And that's what I think we should take into consideration. You know, not just, not just a handful of, of five constituents, but maybe a consensus of people that we have in our area.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Dr. Andy's?
A suggestion for the board to consider would be to table this until our legal counsel reviews what our options are, whether we can or cannot do, or the, or what Comar requires, what the regulations require, what the law requires, and bring it back to the November board meeting with our, uh, legal counsel's advice in terms of next steps. That's a suggestion for the board's consideration.
Okay, I, I currently have a motion on the floor and a second. But he, but you can amend your motion if you'd like.
No, he can make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Buchanan. I have to clear that motion off first, okay? So I have a motion on the floor and a second. Um, the person who made the motion was.
I, I didn't make the motion.
Mr. Gordy, Mr. Gordy, would you like to amend the motion, or would you wanna keep the motion and the second in? Second was by Ms. McComas.
Well, since we've gone this far, I would amend the motion to allow our legal counsel to take a look at what, what this encompasses in our discussion, and then bring it before us next month.
Okay.
To see if we commit clarity from where we are now.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. I have an amended motion by Mr. Gordy, and do I have a second still by Ms. McComas to amend it, to have legal counsel review the motion and bring it back before us in our November meeting? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. Wallace. Okay. Moving forward, I think we have the safety update, and I'm gonna stay with you, Dr. Wallace.
Yes, so we had our first, um, district-wide safety meeting. Um, it was a very successful meeting, um, between our, um, new safety committee members, um, as well as our sheriff's office representation and district staff office, um, and school representation. Um, we got all the new members up to speed on where we are, and, um, we started goal-setting for future meetings. Um, I also wanted to share that, um, at a recent state meeting, Mr. Goddard was put on the spot, and I don't know if he's in here or not. He's out the hallway, I think. Uh, he was, is he? Oh, sorry. I'm getting old, I couldn't turn all the way back around. Mr. Goddard was put on the spot and asked to share our I love, I love you guys foundation implementation, um, because they believe that we had done an excellent job of it, um, and that we would be the best person to help and assist other people in the state who were implementing the I love you guys foundation framework. So if you're around our schools, if you're visiting our schools, and I'm gonna actually get Mr. Goddard to get each of you one of these, if you don't already have it, inside of your badge. Um, but Mr. Goddard will be getting you one of these. I'll ask him to hopefully get it to you before you leave. Um, but this has all of our I love you guys information on it. I know most of you have attended the training, but that way, this is a nice, if you're in a school... a school and you hear we're in a hold, that way you know. There's also a QR code on the back of it. We are working on making sure every staff member in our school district has this as well as the QR code on the back of their card. Because sometimes, you know, we, we have things like a potentially rabid animal. I know there's two administrators who were with me when I had that at our school. And so there's, there's times where you go into a hold where it's something as simple as a wild animal that is on your school property and you can't let students out. But certainly, it would be probably helpful to you all too. So I'll have Mr. Goddard go and grab some of those and have those for you in case you don't have them. You may have grabbed some at the training. But that is all of my safety update. Back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Appreciate it. Now, we have the physical operations. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tolbert, and Mr. Price is on his way up.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Our first item today is an update for Cedar Chapel Special School, Snow Hill Middle School Roof, number four. Mr. Price is going to walk you through that. Joe?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Construction began on Snow Hill Middle Cedar Chapel Roof on June 17th. It was scheduled to compete on August 27th, and a pre-final on September 18th, and did a final inspection last month. Requisition four is the final payment to the contractor including the engine attendants. The superintendent recommends approval of requisition.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the Snow Hill Middle School Cedar Chapel Special School Roof Project requisition number four as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Price. Carry forward.
And again, I said at last meeting, to get a school roof done in the summer is a remarkable accomplishment. So thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you to the entire team, the contractors and engineers and everyone else. Thank you.
I was going to, I was going to comment that having that done in an amount of time is akin to changing the engine on the airplane while it's still flying. That, that's amazing, so great, great work. We did a great job. Thank you.
Revised CIP, Mr. Price?
Last month, the board approved the FY26 capital improvement program. Following discussions with the county government, we revised the CIP to include funding requests for replacement of the Ocean City Elementary Fire alarm system, project to add air conditioning to gymnasiums at post local community school, and design funding to replace existing lighting at each school. We've also added three future project requests for replacement projects at West Det, Indicator High School, Ocean City Elementary School, and the IC 10124 in the back, and then revised to reflect this changes. All of the sections of the CIP remain unchanged. Superintendent recommends approval to revise the CIP and authorize authorization for the IED.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the revised FY26 CIP and an authorization to afford the CIP to the Interagency Commission on School Construction as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
And a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Price. You're still, still with us.
Good, Mr. Price, MOU for Buckingham Elementary School.
Again, last month, the board approved our Buckingham Elementary replacement for Warford's recommendations received by Buckingham Elementary and Berlin Intermediate School Projects. The iteration of school construction has executed a memorandum of understanding of the defined, defined amounts of state funding for both projects, in action school side and construction funding. Following with the county government signature, board president assigned the MOU. Superintendent recommends approval, board president signature on the Buckingham Elementary and Intermediate MOU.
So I need a motion to approve the MOU for funding and construction of the Buckingham Elementary School and Berlin Intermediate School Projects as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Price, before you leave, sir, I just want to, I just want to thank you personally. I know that this was a collaborative effort, but no one worked harder than you and, and your staff in putting this together to have this project come to fruition. And, yeah, but you, you did an outstanding job as usual, and I just want to take the time because I know I spent some time on the phone with you, which doesn't usually happen, and you did a terrific job in getting everybody together to make this project move forward, and I appreciate what you did.
Thank you, Joe. And Mr. Price actually shared me on the ride back from the county commissioners that building the school will actually be easier than it has been to get off the ground. So that's what he shared me earlier. My last item today, Mr. Ferrante, is the monthly financial report for the month of September. With total non-satire expenditures of $6,303,199.64, the superintendent recommends approval of September monthly financial report as presented.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the September 30th, 2024 monthly financial report as presented? A motion by Ms. McComas?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Tolbert. Okay, and now we're coming to board reports, and I'd like to open the floor up to my fellow board members for their comments if you have any comments. Dr. Andes?
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I also want to echo our superintendent's comments earlier and express my appreciation and thanks to building leadership, custodial staff, teachers and support staff, and bus contractors that get us off to a great school year. So thank you, everyone. Number, second thing is, last week was week, was a significant week for our high schools, homecoming week, and I want to especially thank everyone at the building leadership, those who plan the homecoming activities through the, the entire week, our fantastic students, our parents and volunteers for making homecoming week a huge success. And that only happens because a lot of people coming together and working together. Also want to thank the entire team who worked on the Buckingham Elementary School project. It's so good to have that project moving forward. So thank you to the entire team, the work group, our superintendent, everyone who worked hard to, to move that project forward because it, it's, it's needed. It's needed. And finally, we, today we, we recognize our athletes and we recognize our coaches and so forth and so on, and I also want to recognize the families of all of our athletes because without those families helping those athletes, those athletes would not be successful. And also, I'd like to recognize the families of the coaches. Having been a high school coach, families sacrifice an awful lot so that that individual can be out there on the field coaching day in and day out and, in the, with some significant challenges. But thank you very much to families of our athletes we honor today and those athletes and, and families. And also thank you to the families of all the coaches who give up their time and allow that coach to make a difference for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Andes. Any other board members like to make comment today? I did want to say one thing. Today at the commissioner's office, at their headquarters, they approved Buckingham Elementary School, as everybody's well aware of. And I can't tell you what a great day it is for our county, knowing that the state is helping us in the funding of almost $49 million. It's been unheard of. The last funding that we got for Shaw Elementary School was roughly about $8 million. So today, that $49 million goes for not only Buckingham Elementary School, but the future of Berlin Intermediate School. And we had a lot of hard work that was not only done by Mr. Price, as I recognize today, but by the committees from this board as well as the commissioners board, and it was a collaborative effort and everyone that came together to the success of what we're going to vision Buckingham Elementary School and then down the road in 2030 in Berlin Intermediate School. So I'm very proud of the work that was done, and I'm proud that we can get this project moving forward. And Mr. Taylor had a comment. One of our speakers had said something, and I just wanted him to address it.
Yes, I want to clarify something that one of our speakers said today, and I've got verification from the top brass of the sheriff's department doing this because apparently they may have heard it or watched us. And also, when I come in from a restroom break just now, talked to Sergeant Valerio, we have not had any sex offenders arrested on Worcester County Public Schools property this year. It was said 35, I believe is the number, arrested on school grounds this year. That is not appropriate, and I want that clear. We've had zero sex offenders. There may be, and I don't know, I'm not going to get into it, that might, that might be the number throughout the entire county and other locations, but I want our community and those here today, I believe I'm reporting this right, Sergeant Valerio, we have had zero sex offenders arrested on Worcester County Schools property.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there any other board members that have comments? I'm going to stick with you for informational items.
Sure. Okay, I just have three real quick ones. On October the 18th, which is just Friday, all schools and offices will be closed due to the MSEA convention in Ocean City. On November the 4th, schools will be closed for students. It's the end of the first quarter, and it's also a professional day for staff. And the day following that, November 5th, which is Tuesday, schools are closed for students. It is election day, and a number of our schools are used for polling places, but our staff will be working in, that will be a professional day for staff as well. So those are the three date, upcoming dates that I wanted our, our folks to know about. Thank you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The next regular Worcester County Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, in the Sarah D. Thompson Board Meeting Room here at the Worcester County Board of Education Central Office. And we know it's a 627 Worcester Highway. It's going to begin, it's a night meeting, it's going to begin at 5:00, and immediately considered to vote and to convene and close session under general provisions of Article 3-305B of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The board will reconvene in open session at 6:00 PM, and the board meeting information is posted on our website at www.westerkt12.org located under Board Meeting, Board Docs. And now ask my board members for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.